I'd like to call the meeting to order and announce that the purpose of the committee of the whole meeting is to hear presentations on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2019. Would that be 18 and 19? Is that correct, 18 and 19? You can't. Even though it starts in 18, we can say 19. Okay. That's what I got. So, Madam Clerk, your call.
Councilmember Tipp. Councilmember Bench. Mayor Protem Clock. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Bryant is excused. Councilmember Balls. Councilmember Humphreys.
Here.
And Mayor Browning.
Here.
We have eight present, one excused.
At this time, we'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Tim Morales, for presentation.
Thank you. So, this is our first committee of the whole meeting for the fiscal year 19 budget. So, we're not asking for any action at this meeting, just to be presentations. The budget has been prepared and was delivered electronically to council members last Monday, April 30th, as required by city charter. Yolanda Jones, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, her staff, the department heads, all worked very hard to put together the annual budget. It is a long and arduous process that begins in December of the previous year, so I congratulate and thank all of them for all the hard work they had putting it together. You should also have received electronically, and I think there's at your desk, infographics book, which is something that Yolanda and her staff started doing last year. I think it's very helpful and gives you a good snapshot of the citywide budget. Again, it's not an easy task to put the budget together, and the city continues to face unknowns. Increasing healthcare and pension costs, we all know will come due one day, and you're all aware that we did reset our OPEB or other post-employment benefit costs last year through cooperative efforts with retirees. However, it did reset the costs, but it's not static. It's expected that that will increase by approximately 10% this year and will likely increase annually as we move forward. We're still saving money, and it's far better and easier to manage the reduced number of plans, but as I mentioned, the cost does not stay the same. We'll enter our FY 2019 upcoming July 1st with no additional reductions to staff than what we currently have in the current fiscal year. Any additions to actual staff members are related to, particularly in the general fund, related to revenue increases or projected revenue increases. We also need to continue to think about saving for the future. We have submitted our documents to the state of Michigan Treasury Department regarding our pension and OPEB funding. As you know, we're below that threshold that is set in the state law, but we haven't heard back regarding any waivers. I anticipate that there will be more work to be done there, and requirements as we move forward in the current fiscal year or in the beginning of the next fiscal year, so we'll have to address those as they come. Additionally, over the last few years, we've increased our general fund balance. However, we're still below where we should be. I must keep in mind that those funds are there for emergency one-time events if necessary. They should never be viewed as an operational reserve because that would not be sustainable. We only need to look at this past weekend, the mayor pointed out, where we had a lot of city streets crews working overtime to remove the trees. They were out there all weekend, I believe, and that's something that is not budgeted for. That's an expense that sometimes we can get federal funds for, but I think the last time we did that was about 2008. So, that's something that we would look to some of those reserve funds if we have to pay for that. It's not something that is budgeted for because we can't budget for all of those anticipated emergencies. And with that, I'll pass the floor to Ms. Jones.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, councilmembers, city manager, Mayor Morales. Tonight, we're here to discuss the 2018-19 proposed budget, but before we get started, I want to introduce you to your OMB team. You have Brian Weiss, he's our administrative budget analyst. Chaz Bruski.
I think I said it right.
He's our OMB intern. And Josh Eichholdt, he's also the OMB intern. If I can get this going. There we go. So, copies of the 2010 proposed budget are available for viewing in the city clerk's office after tonight's meeting. It will also be available on the city's website at www.saganal-mi.com. The plan deliberation process is starting tonight, today, May 7th. It will continue on May 14th. We're expecting to have a public hearing on May 21st with hopefully an adoption date of May 21st. If anybody has questions or comments, they can most certainly contact the city manager's office, or you can contact me directly at 759-1784, or yjones@saganal-mi.com. That is correct. It's committee of whole at 5:00. So, tonight, I'm going to be going over the budget overview section. Brian Weiss will be covering the general fund, and Chaz Bruski will be covering our special revenues. And we're trying to get that all in under this section of the meeting. There we go. So, the 2019 proposed budget reflects our commitment to providing quality service to our residents while preserving the organizational, long-term financial viability and sustainability of services. The total citywide budget is projected at 120.16 million. This represents a 2.4, roughly $2.4 million increase from the approved 2018 budget. So, you may be wondering at this point in time, why did it go up? Right? So, what increases your Act 51 revenues for major and local streets, which was a result of that seven cents increase on your per-gasoline tax. We have a 2% increase in full-time employees' salary across the board, reclassification of existing personnel in additional new positions, a 3% increase in fringe benefit costs, 10% overall increase to retiree healthcare costs. As city manager mentioned, it was a reset, and now we're starting to see an incremental increase. Police pension valuation, last year you may note that it went down about $800,000. Well, this year's valuation increased by $787,000, so that's part of one of their largest increases to that budget. We also saw some increase in your interdepartmental charges such as the cost allocation, radio rentals, and the motor pool charges. We're projecting a $9.1 million bond issuance in the water fund, and there is various capital projects that were slotted for this year but are going to go into next year, such as the Ajibwe Island project. We also will be having some renovations to the women's restroom in the Public Works Building, a replacement of three overhead doors in the garage, and an upgrade to the building suppression system. We have also budgeted for some capital outlay purchases. Some of them will be direct purchases while others will be through an installment contract. Some of the items that will be on the installment contract will be like our in-car cameras, single-axle hook loader, a rear packer for the environmental improvement part of the rubbish collection. Items that have also decreased these increases, we saw, similar to what you saw for police, a reduction in our fire pension by $320,000, as well as an $83,000 decrease to the unemployment compensation. Last year, we had $94,000 budgeted for unemployment with the departure of the 13 firefighters. This year, we only have for one individual that's currently working as we have someone on military leave. We also see an estimated decrease in your community development block grant by a net $652,000. We still haven't gotten our final numbers. That may change. The approval of the CWG dollars is done on a three-term basis, where they come to you in February. We include it in the budget, and then we get our final numbers after the budget is normally adopted. So, at this point, we're just kind of waiting for the Department of Housing and Urban Development to get back to us. We're also seeing a $1.5 million decrease in our water operation and maintenance fund, and this is largely due to the completion of the Davis Road Improvement Project. What you will see as we continue through our presentation is that we're going to get into more details of specifically what's going on with each of the different funds. So, for the general fund in 2019, we're projecting it to be about $34.27 million. This represents an increase of 2.5 million from the approved 18 budget. Non-general Fund budget accounts for about 71, actually 72%, roughly of the total budget of 120.16 million. So, for pictorial purposes, we wanted to show you what does that mean. Again, the general fund's about 29%, where your special revenue funds are about 18%. Your enterprise fund, which is your larger fund, that's where a lot of the activities are, consisting of your boat launch, water, and sewer, is roughly about 48%. Internal service funds are about 7%, and then your fiduciary fund actually decreases down to .03%. We'll go over this next week. Our unfunded liability fund was one of, part of the fiduciary fund. It is now merged into a special revenue fund because it's not a trust. So, that's part of the budget. We shifted it from a fiduciary fund over to a special revenue fund. Looking at your tax bills over the last five years, what you will see is basically it's the same. So, in fiscal year 15, it was at 14.883, and fiscal year 19, it's the same. This is, although the city property tax remains flat, there's a slight change. As we get to the general fund revenues, you're going to see that it actually increases about 1.6%, but that is due to the various brownfield and LDF capture districts that have affected the general fund. So, Lori Brown, the finance director, and I have been working on cleaning up some of the brownfields and LDFAs, and so you're seeing revenues come from those funds into the general fund. Your consumer price index for the year, tax year 2017, is .9%. So, let's look at the budget, the overall budget from a categorical standpoint. Personnel services actually increased by 3.92% or 4%. This increase is due to, again, a 2% across-the-board wage increase, a 3% increase to active healthcare, 10% increase to your retiree healthcare. You have an increase to your police pension, almost about $800,000. And then you had some changes in positions. This budget adds a utilities collection coordinator for fiscal services in the customer accounting. That position, although it's part of fiscal services, is paid for by water and sewer. Three police officers were added to the complement. One was previously approved by city council in January when we got additional funds for the Saginaw TAPS grant. Two were added recently when we entered into a contract with Covenant Healthcare. So, those three positions are fully funded. We have a code enforcement officer that was added to the complement, and this one, again, as the city managers mentioned, is funded through additional enforcement activities so that their salary is totally covered as well. That position is also listed in the general fund. And the Department of Public Services, a deputy director of public services will be added. We have two labor positions, an engineering assistant, a fleet maintenance technician, and a part-time seasonal laborer at City Hall was added. And the Department of Water and Wastewater Services, a maintenance foreman, a plant operator A, and a sewer maintenance plant person II will be added to the complement. And in the Department of Technical Services, a GIS technician for water and sewer will be added. We also, looking at some operational restructuring, in the Office of Human Resources, the Director of Human Resources will be promoted to the Assistant City Manager, Human Resources Director. In the Office of Management and Budget, the administrative budget analyst, Brian, he is now being reclassified to the Administrative Budget Analyst II. In the Department of Technical Services, the Enterprise Analyst will be reclassified to an Enterprise Operation Analyst, and this individual will be working closely with the Collection Specialist, who has also been reclassified to the Collection and Revenue Coordinators, for they will be looking at the revenues for the city to make sure that we're collecting the revenues that we're entitled to. Going back to the Department of Technical Services, the GIS specialist for water and sewer, that's a current position, will be reclassified to Asset Management Coordinators. There's been a lot of conversations, and I know that in June at the Plant Moran training, they're going to be talking about asset management. Asset management is something that we're all facing, and we've been working on it for several years, but it's going to be a large expense, and so we're adding positions to deal exactly with your asset management of infrastructure. In the Department of Fiscal Services, already mentioned, the Collection and Revenue Coordinator. In the city's manager's office, with the departure of Debbie Powell, she was the Assistant to the City Manager, Public Information Officer. That position was reclassified to Ms. Vicky Davis as the Executive Assistant to the City Manager. And the Department of Water and Wastewater Services, changes operationally is due to, like I said, to the asset management project that's required by the state of Michigan, and therefore, the plant engineer will be reclassed to the Water Sewer Engineer, Asset Management Supervisor. That's a long title. Also, there will be a realignment of the maintenance mechanics in both water and sewer. Finally, three management positions will be reallocated, the police chief, the Director of Water/Wastewater Services, and the Director of Public Services. And this reallocation was based off the internal job study that was completed for management. To offset these personnel changes, there will be some reductions. Again, I've already mentioned about the fire pension costs and the unemployment costs going down. To reiterate, the fire pension costs, although it's going down this year, we are expecting it, just like police, to increase next year. As it relates to the personnel services, this budget does reflect the reduction of the 13 firefighters. Now, we have listed it in the 2018 budget. We had projected for the Homeland Security Safer Grant to end in September of last year, but it actually got extended through January. So, those positions, looking at it from approved to proposed, is a reduction of 13 positions. We previously stated that the Sewer Plant Maintenance Person II was added. With it being added, there was the elimination of a Sewer Plant Maintenance Person I. Looking at operating services, you're seeing that citywide, it decreased about 15%, and this decrease is largely due to the reduction in construction projects in the water and sewer operation and maintenance funds, and that's because of the Davis Road Project. And to offset this reduction will be an increase in number of different street projects that was planned for streets, and that was a presentation given by Ms. Beth London last meeting. We're also seeing some increases, as I previously stated, in the interdepartmental charges. Maintenance services, which includes transfers increased to fund equity, debt service grants and block grant services increases about 54%, and this is primarily due in part to the planning of installment payment. So, as I mentioned, that we're looking at capital purchases. Some areas we couldn't direct pay for, so we're looking at an installment contract to cover some of these purchases. Then we have other capital purchases and improvements that have, I've already previously mentioned. We will continue to make payments on our debt service for the 2015 and 2016 bond issuances. Capital outlay will increase about $5.26 million from fiscal year 18, and that increase is due to purchases, outright purchases of vehicles and equipment. So, looking at your benefit changes, as I previously stated, active healthcare goes up 3%, life insurance, short-term, long-term disability, they show to be a decrease. Last year, when we put the budget together, we had significant charges for life insurance and short-term, long-term disability. Dennis Jordan, the HR Director, he went out and remarketed. We got new rates mid-year. Based on those new rates, your budget is exactly the same as the amended changes. So, but in comparison to your 2018 budget, you're seeing that reduction. Retiree healthcare, as previously stated, increases roughly 10 to 11%. As in previous year, we always like to list out our city strategic plan. We changed it since last time, it was in 2017, that we talked about our change in our strategic goals of economic development of urban core, neighborhood revitalization, arts, culture, and recreation, police and fire, and utilities, infrastructure. The budget has funding placed in it to address those areas. So, looking at it from a historical city budget, like what's our general fund to our citywide budget, what you're seeing is that fiscal year 18-19 is about $2 million higher than, and the $2 to $3 million higher than the previous year. So, at this time, I'm asking Brian Weiss to come up, and he'll discuss some of the general fund for you.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, councilmembers, city manager Morales. At this time, I'm going to go over the general fund revenues and expenditures, beginning with the general fund revenues beginning on page 62. The general fund's budget for fiscal year 2019 is projected to be about $34 million or an increase of about $2.5 million from previous year. And as in previous fiscal years, the three major revenue sources are property taxes, state shared revenues, and income taxes. Property taxes will be approximately $4 million for fiscal year 2019, and this is a 1.6% increase. And as Yolanda mentioned, these property tax revenues, like the mileage is the same, but the revenues actually decrease, but this reduction is offset by an increase in prior year's refund on brownfield and LFA capturing district funds. State shared revenues are 24% of the general fund and projected to be about $8.3 million or an increase of $250,000, and this will be realized in the constitutional revenue Income taxes will be about $12.6 million, and this is a 3% increase from last year. And grants are increasing by $225,000 to a total of $1.1 million. And this increase in grants is associated with an increase in local community stabilization funding and Medicare reimbursements. Licenses, permits, and fees will be $1.75 million. This increase is about $400,000, mostly due to an increase in housing registration fees, building permits, and delinquent general business licenses. Charges for services will be $942,000, and this is mostly due to an increase in revenue for grave sales. And fines and forfeitures are expected to decrease by $58,000, and this is due to decreases in parking lot receipts and parking violation fines. These reductions are based on historical trends. And new in fiscal year 2019, the city has allocated funds for delinquent parking violations. Interests and rents are projected to increase by $28,000 due to an expected increase in interest received on delinquent income taxes and investments. And reimbursements will be $4.3 million. Due to a change in financial reporting standards in regards to pension costs under GASB 68, which was passed a couple of years ago, the indirect costs for certain areas increased substantially, and this results in a larger contribution to the general fund. Another reason for this increase is that the city will be receiving funds from Covenant to cover the costs of two police officers assigned to Covenant Hospital. Other revenues will increase by $4,600, and there will be operating transfers in from other funds of about $135,000, and this consists of an allocation from the Community Development Block Grant for the community police officer that this fund provides funding for. And no use of fund equity is appropriated for fiscal year 2019. And here's an overview of the expenditures in the general fund and how they have changed from the previous year. Beginning with General Government, in more detail on page 77, this offices of General Government consist of the following offices, a city council, city manager, SGTV, human resources, city clerk and elections, city attorney and the Office of Management and Budget, and that accounts for about 7.2% of the total general fund. And the proposed budget for these offices is projected around $2.5 million. This is an increase of $31,000, mostly due to an increase in the cost of election workers due to it being an election year. Also, additional funds have been added to the city attorney's budget to cover the costs of the brownfield redevelopment authority attorney services, and this increase is offset by a reduction in capital expenditures for the coming year. Next is Fiscal Services, beginning page 87, and this represents 8.5% of the general budget. It's $2.9 million or an increase of $5,000, and this increase is attributable to contractually obligated pay increases, partially offset by a reduction in information management costs. Community Public Safety Police represents 35% of the general fund and will be $12 million this year or an overall increase of $1.6 million. The largest increase will be realized in Personnel Services due to a 2% across-the-board salary increase, a nearly $800,000 increase in the pension obligation, as Yolanda mentioned earlier, 10% increase in retiree healthcare costs, and the addition of two police officers funded by Covenant Healthcare. And as you may recall, and as Yolanda mentioned, in January, council approved the addition of one officer for the TAPS grant. So, until three additional police officers have been included since last year. In addition, motor pool charges have increased, and $180,000 in capital is budgeted. The city is taking a systematic approach to replacing the police fleet. The goal is to maintain a new and reliable fleet of vehicles in the most cost-effective manner. In the current year, we plan on purchasing four patrol vehicles, well, sorry, plan on purchasing four patrol vehicles using savings from within the police budget. Next year, $60,000 is budgeted for the lease of 14 detective vehicles, and $120,000 is budgeted to purchase four more patrol vehicles. And these vehicle purchases are expected to reduce motor pool charges in the future, thus creating some offsetting cost savings. And finally, there is about $19,000 in funds budgeted for installment payments for the purchase of in-car cameras. Next is Community Public Safety Fire, beginning on page 105. Fire represents about 24% of the total budget and will be about $8.1 million or a net decrease of $58,000. And Personnel Services will realize a net decrease of $93,000. Pension obligation for this department decreases by $320,000, and looking at the trends, fire pension costs seem to follow what police pension did the year before. So, last year, police had a reduction in pension obligation of around $575,000, and as I just mentioned, their obligation went up by about $800,000 for fiscal year 19. Because of this, we're anticipating an increase in fire's pension obligation next year, and we're looking at we're looking ahead for that. Another reduction that was previously discussed was an $83,000 decrease to unemployment compensation costs. In 2018, the city anticipated the potential layoff of 13 firefighter positions with the completion of the Homeland Security SAFER grant. These positions were eliminated from the personnel complement in January of 2018, and for the fiscal year 2019 budget, only one position remains due to filling a fire position held by an incumbent who is on military leave. With the return of the incumbent, the heldover position is entitled to unemployment, this budget accounts for that. This reduction in pension and unemployment costs is partially offset by a 10% increase in retiree healthcare, a 3% increase to active healthcare, and a 2% pay increase. Operating services will decrease about $5,000 due to decreased utility costs, general repair costs, information management charges, and supply costs, and these are offset by increased insurance and motor vehicle repair costs. No capital outlay purchases will be made, however, this department will continue to pay the installment payments for the recently acquired fire trucks as part of the city's efforts to update the fire fleet. Next is Department of Neighborhood Services and Inspections, which represents about 5% of the budget, and will be about $1.7 million, or an $185,000 increase. And this increase is due to contractual pay increases, the addition of a code enforcement officer in the inspections division, and budgeting $44,000 to contribute toward the cost of updating the city's master plan. No capital outlay purchases have been budgeted, but there is a $9,000 amount budgeted for the lease of two vehicles for the parking division. In Public Services, the amount will total to about $3.9 million, or net increase of $436,000. In fiscal year 2019, the Celebration Park Special Revenue Fund will cease to exist, and the operation will be absorbed into the general fund, so that will account for most of those expenditure increases. Personnel costs for these divisions increased by $61,000, most again is due to the addition of 11 part-time seasonal Celebration Park employees, along with the 2% pay increases citywide. Operating expenses increased by $360,000 due to increased employment agency fees in the abatement of nuisances and facilities divisions, as well as costs pertaining to the grant-funded Ojibwe Island Improvement Project. There are capital expenses of $11,000 for repairs to the office roof at Oakwood Cemetery, and this is covered by investment revenue for the cemeteries. And finally, there is also $12,000 budgeted for installment payments to purchase vehicles and equipments in these areas. And finally, for other general fund, and other general fund expenditures that are not directly related to any particular department or operation, these include retiree health insurance, unemployment compensation, payments to other local government units, and debt These areas will increase by 277,000, or about 10%, and this is mostly due to a higher appropriation of GIS charges for services provided, and, once again, the 10% increase to retiree healthcare costs. And at this point, I'm going to bring up Chaz Bresky to cover the special revenue funds for you, so thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, and Manager Morales. I'm going to get started with the special revenue funds here, and these are basically the funds that are receiving money for a specific purpose. Here we go back to the little pie chart here, and as you can see, special revenue funds for fiscal year 19 will be about $21 million. This represents about a $350,000 increase from the prior year, which is about 17% of the total funds. Now we'll go into the first set of funds here. Major and local streets can be found on page 130 to 155. Combined, these are about $7.6 million this fiscal year. Major streets is 6.7 million, for an overall increase of about $450,000, and local streets is about 2.1 million, for an overall increase of about $675,000. Combined, you'll see, this is just major streets. So major streets realizes an overall increase of about $450,000 overall. For Personnel Services, the increase is largely from two labor two positions that were added, along with the 2% increases across the board. And additional increases that occurred due to active and retiree healthcare. Pertaining to the capital outlay, it increases by about $80,000. This includes the purchase of a one-ton mini dump truck and a high ranger to be used for tree maintenance. Miscellaneous expenditures increased by about $230,000, include a transfer of $270,000 to the local streets fund, $15,000 to help fund the city's OPAP liability, and an estimated $25,000 for installment payments for the purchase of vehicles and equipment. These increases are offset by decreases in operating services of about $75,000 due to having fewer construction projects planned for the year. Now we'll go into local streets, which increases by about $675,000. Personnel Services increases by about $17,000, mostly due to the 2% pay increases. Operating Services increased by about $650,000 due to increases in street resurfacing projects planned, with the major ones being Harden Street and Madison Street. With this increase in projects, also comes an increase in street and road materials needed to do the projects. Capital outlay for local streets is planned to be zero this year, and the fund will contribute about $9,000 towards the OPAP liability, and $1,000 for security upgrades to City Hall. Now we'll get into the rubbish collection fund, which can be found on page, starting on page 156. The capital, the rubbish collection fund accounts for the financial resources... Typo's there. The rubbish collection fund starts on page 156. The budget for this year is about 4.2 million for fiscal year 19. This is an increase of about $175,000 from the prior year. In the rubbish fund, Personnel Services will increase about $10,000 from fiscal year 18. This increase is largely due to contractually obligated pay increases. Operating Services will increase about $110,000. This increase is due to increases in the MMWA rates, and also increases in GIS, motor pool, and indirect costs. $20,000 is budgeted for capital outlay to replace the office at the compost site. Miscellaneous expenditures increased by $35,000 to continue making payments on its portion of the 2015 GO Limited Tax Capital Improvement Bond. $6,000 for its share to help fund the city's OPAP liability, and is anticipated to have an additional debt service payment beginning in fiscal year 19 for the purchase of new vehicles and equipment that are needed to continue providing necessary services. And now we'll move into the public safety fund. This can be found, starting on page 169. The resources allocation for the public millage safety, public safety millage fund will be about 2.8 million for this year. This is a decrease of 215 from the prior year. This reduction is due to a decrease in the amount of taxes that we received, as well as no longer recognizing the previous fiscal year's funds reserves. The total personnel complement will be 32 full-time people for fiscal year 19. This is the same amount as prior years. Now we'll move into the public safety grants. They can be found, starting on page 175. The police training fund remains prior as the last year and the years before at $14,000. The drug forfeiture fund will remain the same at about $67,000. The SAG-AO TAPS grant will increase by $69,000 for the 19 budget. The city will continue to receive funds from the county health department to cover the cost of two full-time equivalent police officers. In addition, funds were also allocated to cover the operating expenditures of the program. The city receives the police alert grant in November of 2015 to enhance law enforcement response to victims of crimes. The fiscal year 19 budget will be $25,000 to cover the costs, the arrangement with the canned counsel, and provide counseling service to victims. The Anderson Enrichment Center and the SAG-AO Arts and Enrichment Commission can be found, starting on page 199. The Anderson Enrichment Center is projected to be $87,000 for fiscal year 19. The city filed a deficit elimination plan with the state in fiscal year 17, and the fiscal year 19 budget is in line with that plan. The SAG-AO Arts and Enrichment Commission proposed budget is about $200,000. This is an overall increase of roughly $2,000. For fiscal year 19, the DGA budget will be zero. This fund has been consolidated with the DDA 2011 fund. The Brownfield Authority Fund increases by about $12,000 due to an increase in real property tax values within these districts. And the DDA 2011 revenues will be about $172,000 for fiscal year 19. This fund will consist of the regular tax increment revenue district, the Community Development Block Grant contract with SAG-AO Future that was previously listed under the old DDA fund, and the two-mill levy. These funds can be found, starting on page 207. Now we'll go to Community Development Block Grant. You can find this, starting on page 220. Community developed block grants, or CDBG, will be about $3.8 million for this year. This is an overall decrease of roughly $650,000. Most of this decrease is due to the use of carryover funds in fiscal year 18 that are not budgeted in 19. CDB Residential Loan Fund will be about $600,000 for fiscal year 19. This represents a $23,000 increase from the prior fiscal year. The CDBG Home Program will decrease by about $40,000. This reduction is due to a decrease in the federal entitlement funding. Total budget for this fund is about $540,000. The SAG-AO Economic Development Corporation Revolving Loan Fund will decrease by $420,000. This decrease is due to recognition of loan disbursements. Total budget for the SAG-AO Economic Development Corporation Revolving Loan Fund will be Unfunded liabilities fund can be found on page 243. This is new in fiscal year 19. The unfunded liabilities fund will be appropriated under a special revenue fund. Reason for this change is due to the fact that this fund is not a trust and could not be reflected as a fiduciary fund. In comparing fiscal year 2018 to 2019, this fund increases by about 7%. This is due to the city continuing to appropriate funds toward the OPAP liability. The Capital Project Fund can be found on page 246, and it accounts for the financial resources that are used for long-term investment projects, requiring large sums to acquire, develop, improve, and/or maintain capital assets. Revenue is received through transfers from the general and rubbish collection funds. The total for this year is about $540,000, and this is to pay the principal and interest payments on the GO Limited Capital Improvement Bond, Series 2015, as well as provide security upgrades to City Hall. The Celebration Park Fund can be found on 249, and this will be zero. As was previously stated, this fund is going to be moved and merged into the general fund. And with that, questions? But are we going to do?
I actually have a question. How do you want to roll with, do you want to stay specific on there? Or just do them with all the questions at once?
Yeah, how, do you have a?
What?
Up, work down.
Okay. Then I'll ask questions on the revenue side first.
First, not expenditure. On the increase in income tax collection here.
Where you have to follow along.
Okay.
What slide?
The slide would be the general fund revenue slide for income taxes and grant revenue. Oh, gosh, what is that? About slide number... Yeah, we don't have them by pages here. Page five, yeah, there it is. Page five of our paper copy. It says the increase, a large part of the increase is subject to increased income tax revenue from new businesses and better delinquent tax collection. Do we have some experience that we're basing this on in the current fiscal year? Are we projecting that this will continue?
Well, what we've realized is that the, especially for the delinquent income tax revenue, has actually been going up. So when we put together a budget, we worked with the department, division head, to determine, you know, what they're thinking the revenues will be for the year. So that would be reflective in your budget, so what we're seeing is a trend upward.
Okay, so we are seeing experience in the current fiscal year where?
Yep, current fiscal year and the past fiscal year. Normally, when we develop a budget, we look at a five-year historical trend, and then project outward, working with the department and the division.
So that would follow along for the increase in the license, permit, and fee income? We're looking at our trend line. It's positive.
Right. So your license permits and fees, and without having the book in front of me, we have like the non-owner occupied.
Right.
As part of it, there was an aggressive activity or effort put towards collection of these funds. Working with Mr. John Stimple and Jana Santos, what we're seeing is that that revenue is coming in high. Last year, it came in about $400,000 to the good, and so projecting forward, and with increased enforcement, we're expecting it to trend upward as well.
Okay, great. Someone else?
Nope, you're it.
Page 11, rubbish collection fund.
Okay.
It has a line called property taxes, and it's a negative. It's a payout.
Right, it's a chargeback, so...
To the county?
Yeah, we settle with the county each year. We send it over, they attempt to collect on it, they're not able to collect on it, they send it back to us.
That's what I thought. That's my note, too. It's all my notes.
Go ahead.
You said the revenue was going up with the fees and stuff like that? And you're gonna add, you're adding a new job for somebody to get those fees, did you say?
I'm saying that we are taking a very proactive approach towards revenue collections, and we are adding a position, actually, the position already exists as a collection specialist. She's just doing more of the collection type activities citywide. When we originally created the collection specialist position, it was focusing on income tax and property tax. Now that you're changing the title, they have more effort to collect more monies that are owed to us. Working with the OMB team and the finance director, we're looking at all revenue sources. Last year, about this time, when we were working with SMP, one of the things that they said that we had issues with, and why we have a triple B plus, is we have flat revenues. So to address that, we are making a concerted effort to look at revenues and how they're coming in, why they're coming in, if they're not coming in, what we can do to bring them in. So that team is coming together to work on revenues and revenue collections and making sure that we get our money.
So did you say we're not adding a position? You say somebody?
It's an existing position.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. It's just being reclassed.
Okay. You didn't say reclassed at first, or did you? You said add a position.
I probably just said add, but then I misspoke. It should have been reclassed.
I'm just saying, I'm concerned when we add more, you know, we get more chiefs and less.
Right. Well, but the positions that we're adding are, they have revenues that are offsetting to pay for them, too.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
They're increasing. Are we gonna ever look at not issuing warrants for taxes for the working people?
I don't think, I mean, that's one effective method that we have for income tax collection that's unpaid. We didn't used to utilize income tax warrants very effectively. Probably, we started... Probably, we started that probably about two thousand and seven, six or seven, around that time. And I think our delinquent income tax collection went from about a hundred thousand dollars a year to now it's over a million dollars a year. So without that enforcement mechanism, I fear it would drop back down to a hundred thousand dollars. We're not, we're not collecting income tax that's not owed to the city. It's, it's part of our ordinance.
You get a bond, you gotta pay for the bond to get out, or you may end up losing your job. And I guess I'm just asking, because other cities are not doing it. So I'm just asking the question.
If the most of you guys don't actively collect their income tax, I believe the process is that they will get a letter from income tax several times before a warrant is ever issued. So they have, I think it's a three-process, three-step process, and Lori's gonna come up and kind of explain the process. But there is, there's a lot of adequate contact there to resolve the issue.
Yeah, I don't know exactly how many letters they get, but they do get adequate warning.
Address anymore than I don't get, and then I get a job, and I'm just asking, because people keep asking me. And so that's a concern. I lose my job, because I got, I get stopped on my way to work for maybe a traffic violation. Simple thing. But then I find out I got a warrant. Now, mind you, I didn't have a job to pay before, but now I got a job. And I guess I'm just asking the question.
Right. We can probably outline the process just to make sure, but I think we're, we get our information from a third party, so we actually do a search and get a pretty up-to-date address, so.
So, you know what? Can I just get some information on that?
Sure.
Because I'm really, I have citizens who come to me, and I bail them out of jail. And then they still got to come back over here and give some money, or they gonna go back to jail, because I'm gonna put them back in jail. So I guess I need to get some valid, so that I know if they can wait till in the morning, wait till in the morning, then don't give it to me, give it to the city.
Right, and we can also check to see how many, like, what's the accuracy of where we're sending the notices to, to what their actual address is. We can get some information gathered on that.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, John.
Hi, I have one question under the revenue side.
All increase in property tax revenue. Have we certified our assessment roll for this year, or is that upcoming? Oh. You're anxious, Lori.
We have. That was at the close of March Board of Review, at the end of March.
Okay.
And everything is submitted to the county the first of April.
Is this then from some increase in property values, or is it mostly on these special rolls?
It's actually because of the capturing district, the Brownfield.
Right.
So property taxes in general are just flat. I wouldn't say that there's any increase due to a millage or property value increases, but it's the way the Brownfield money was booked from prior years, that cleanup that Yolanda was talking about that we've been working on. So it's actually showing it like an increase to property tax revenues overall, but not what you would think of as increased revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Do you guys understand you have a decrease in the community block grant?
Right now, it's projected to decrease, but again, we're still waiting on finalized numbers, so that could change. What we were told by the Department of Housing and Urban Development is to budget like we were gonna receive the current year's amount. If it comes in higher, then fine. If it doesn't, then we account it for it. So we're still waiting for the final numbers. And as you may recall, this, the CDBG allocation is a three-step process. When they come to you in February, asking you to approve the city manager's recommendation of allocation of funds, we build it into the budget, so when you approve the budget itself, you're approving the allocation again. And then when we get our final numbers, which normally happens after the budget's been approved, we're asking you to approve it for the final time, and that's normally when we have our final numbers from the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So.
Hard number. Changed almost every year from the initial, initial allocation that we bring to council. Typically, it has, I think, gone down each year, and what we do is reduce that by the percentage of reduction to each of the allocations, so everyone shares equally in that.
So do we really, you said six-hundred thousand dollars? We budget less than?
Yes.
Okay. But that don't mean it's actually gonna go that far?
It does not.
Okay.
No, once we get our final numbers, we'll communicate with the city manager and then bring our plan back to you for your approval.
Did we approve that? And then, well, did we approve that earlier this year for six-hundred thousand dollars less?
We approved what we were given last year, which was six-hundred thousand dollars less.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
We have to put it down. Six, so whenever you're ready, if there are more questions, Yolanda and her staff can answer those during the management update as well.
That sounds good. Anything else immediately, right now? If none, we'll adjourn.
To tonight's city council meeting. We begin our city council meeting with the prayer and the pledge. If those would like to join me, gracious Father, we thank you for this opportunity we have to serve the citizens. We thank you for the opportunity to look at our budget tonight, proposed budget. We ask you be with us as that is being presented. Be with all our city workers, our public safety officers. Keep them safe and in your will. Help us to deliberate tonight. We ask this in your name. Amen.
All right. And Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Here. Councilmember Tibbs.
Here.
Councilmember Bench is excused. Mayor Pro Tem Clock.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Bryant is excused. Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Humphries.
Here.
And Mayor Browning.
Here.
You have seven present and two excused.
Thank you. And for purposes of going through our rules of order, we just remind the audience to remain quiet, and if you can, and at this time, if you have your electronic devices with you, you might wanna turn them off or down, so they do not interfere with our council meeting.
On the agenda are a couple announcements. City council will meet on Monday, May fourteenth, at five PM for a committee of the whole meeting to continue fiscal year twenty-nineteen budget presentations. The two thousand and eighteen yard waste collection service is the same day as your regular trash day. Yard waste must be in paper yard waste bags or in thirty-five gallon or smaller garbage can, not weighing more than fifty pounds, with a yard waste sticker affixed to the front. Yard waste stickers are available in the city clerk's office. We have a few proclamations on the agenda tonight, the first of which designating May sixth through the twelfth, twenty eighteen, as Municipal Clerks Week.
And could we have our acting city clerk, please, come to the podium? This is an honor. Great privilege. I have a proclamation honoring the municipal clerks. And whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants and is a vital part of local government that exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas the municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their state, county, and international professional organization. And whereas it is appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, do recognize the week of May sixth through May twelfth, twenty eighteen, as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our city clerk's office and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed this seventh day of May in the year of our Lord, two thousand and eighteen. Signed, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor. Councilmembers, Mayor Pro Tem Floyd Clock, councilmembers Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, John Humphries, John Milne, Brenda F. Moore, and Demond L. Tibbs, and our city manager, Mr. Timothy Morales. Congratulations. Do you want to step forward to receive this? And the other clerks, come forward, too, please. Thank you for all your hard work down there, guys. We'll give you a few minutes to say a couple words.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, and city manager. With me from our team is Kenesha Walker and Janice Anman. Clerk Santos and Laura Murphy couldn't be with us tonight, but we all greatly appreciate the recognition. We would just like to note that as part of Clerks Week, we are visiting the high schoolers, high schools, and registering the older high schoolers to vote and asking them to sign up to work in election. So if you know any young people, please encourage them to get out and register and be a part of an election day. Thank you once again. Okay, our next proclamation is designating May twenty eighteen as Mental Health Month.
And I have a Tim. Now, Mayor, up, Tim? Well, welcome back, Tim. And do you have some people with you? Well, let me read the proclamation first, and then we'll get to your special guest. Proclamation reads as follows. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall physical health and emotional well-being. And whereas mental illness will strike one in five adults and children in a given year, regardless of age, gender, race, authenticity, religion, or economic status. And whereas people who have mental illnesses can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas, an estimated two-thirds of adults and young people who have mental health disorders do not, are not receiving the help they need. And whereas the cost of untreated and mistreated mental illness and addictive disorders to human, to American businesses, governments, and families has grown to one-hundred-and-thirteen billion dollars annually. And whereas community-based services that respond to individual and family needs are cost-effective and beneficial to consumers and the community. And whereas the National Mental Health Association and its national partners observe Mental Health Month every May to raise awareness and understanding of mental health and illness. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, on behalf of my fellow council members, do hereby proclaim May twenty eighteen as Mental Health Month. In the City of Saginaw, I urge all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in our communities to commit to increasing awareness and the understanding of mental health, diagnosis, and treatment, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses. In witness thereof, I hereby unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Saginaw to be fixed this seventh day of May in the year of our Lord, two thousand and eighteen. Signed, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem Floyd Clock. Councilmembers Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, John Humphries, John Milne, Brenda F. Moore, and Demond L. Tibbs. Our city manager, Mr. Timothy Morales. Congratulations. If you guys want to step up here.
Very briefly, I'm gonna let the few people that came with me say a little something, because I get to talk all the time, and they're just gonna say a little bit about their personal experiences.
Hi, my name's Chanel, and I'm a person in long-term recovery from mental health and substance use disorder. And I have several different diagnoses, but the thing about it is, is that my diagnosis doesn't define who I am. It's not who I am, it's what I suffer from and what I've overcome. So I'm just grateful to be here, and thank you for the honor.
My name is Beth Urick, and I'm a person in long-term recovery from a substance use disorder and a co-occurring mental health disorder. And which, that means to me that I have not used substances, alcohol, or any other drugs since March of two thousand and seven, and have been active in my, in my mental health care. And the opportunity to have those resources available to me has just been invaluable. It has allowed me to be a mother that my children can be proud of, a grandmother, a productive member of society. I am a friend, a mentor, a sponsor, and an employee today. And I am also in the helping field, so I am now helping other people find recovery today. So being able to give back, that means a lot. So thank you so much for your time and attention. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is Doug Carter. I'm a person in long-term recovery. I suffer from substance abuse disorder. Since two thousand and four, December the third, I've not used any mind-mood-altering chemicals. Since that day, I became a productive member of society in the Saginaw, Michigan County and throughout state and throughout other places that I've been fortunate enough to travel. And as is said in the Godfather Sardar, I wanna thank you for allowing us to come here today, because we are proud to be part of a community that allows help to be distributed to the peoples of me in this community. And it's a great honor. I am a member, I work for Sacred Heart, not only in Saginaw, but Bay County as well, as a prevention and activity coordinator, I'm a certified substance abuse prevention specialist, as well as a peer recovery coach. I'm also a dick of my church, Tabernacle Missionary Baptist Church. I'm a proud member of this community, and thank you again for allowing me to be of service.
Our next proclamation is designating May tenth, two, twenty eighteen, as Police Memorial Day. And Mayor Officer Hope is also for number four. It looks like there's a typo on your script agenda. So at the end, when you're done, should be the number.
Yes, okay. And will he be receiving the proclamation for Police Memorial Day? All right, you're up. Well, both of you are up. You're good. Feel free, get right up there. Go ahead, take a picture. You bet. Thank you. City of Saginaw proclamation: Whereas the courageous men and women of the Saginaw City Police Department should be honored for the discipline and distinction they show in preserving the rights, freedom, and safety of all citizens of Saginaw. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, hazards, responsibilities, and sacrifices that these brave officers, as they serve our community. And whereas it is difficult to completely show our true appreciation for the services the men and women provide for the community. These brave officers often put their lives on the line to protect our citizens, sometimes making the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas the President of the United States and the Congress has designated May 13th through 19th, 2018, as National Police Week to salute the men and women who do the difficult, dangerous, and often thankless work of safeguarding our communities. During this time, we celebrate those who protect and serve us every minute of every day. And whereas on Thursday, May 10th, 2018, the City of Saginaw will recognize the members of our police force and pay tribute to those officers who have laid down their lives in the performance of their duty. And on this day, we will honor law enforcement officers, both past and present, who, with their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to the residents of the City of Saginaw. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Dennis D. Browning, on behalf of the, my fellow council members, do hereby proclaim May 10th, 2018, as Police Memorial Day in the City of Saginaw, and urge all citizens to observe this day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. I further, excuse me, recognize, I further encourage schools, businesses, religious institutions, service organizations, and the community as a whole to recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Saginaw to be fixed this 7th day of May in the year of our Lord 2018. Signed, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem Floyd Clock, council members Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, John Humphries, John Milne, Brenda F. Moore, and Demond L. Tibbs, and our city manager, Timothy Morales. Would you accept this on behalf of our department, please? You're not done. Come on up here. They're all very important proclamations. This one gets a little more personal. A proclamation: Whereas law enforcement officers of the City of Saginaw carry a tremendous responsibility to protect our citizens, they fulfill their responsibilities diligently with courage and commitment, often placing themselves in harm's way. And whereas each year, one exemplary individual from the Saginaw Police Department is honored for the courage, discipline, and distinction they show in preserving the rights, freedom, and safety of the citizens of Saginaw. And whereas Officer Brad Hope has earned the honor of the 2018 Officer of the Year Award for his thorough and proactive approach to policing and investigations. Officer Hope is known for going the extra mile to ensure the innocent are protected and the City of Saginaw is safe for our citizens. And whereas through the perseverance of Officer Hope and others like him in the Saginaw Police Department, we are experiencing a drastic reduction in violent crime in the City of Saginaw. Officer Brad Hope demonstrates hard work and dedication every day. He truly is an asset to the Saginaw Police Department and the citizens he serves. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, hereby urge all citizens of Saginaw to recognize, honor, and celebrate the outstanding achievements and contributions that Saginaw Police Officer Brad Hope has made to the City of Saginaw. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed this 7th day of May in the year of our Lord 2018. Signed, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor. Our Mayor Pro Tem Floyd Clock, council members Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, John Humphries, John Milne, Brenda F. Moore, Demond L. Tibbs, and our city manager, Timothy Morales. Officer Hope, congratulations. We're very excited. Officer Hope, would you say a couple words? And please introduce your special guest today.
Thank you. My wife on the end, Rachel, my son Keegan, and my other son Taylor. I would like to thank you all for this award and for recognizing May as Police Week. Here in a couple days, I'll be flying out to Washington DC to represent Saginaw Police Department, like I have done the last 10 years, at the Police Memorial with President Trump and fellow officers that'll be attending, so I really do appreciate that. What can I say? You know, every day I come in here, I work my butt off to try to make a difference in this community. Although I'm not a member of this community, I don't even live within two counties, but I come here and I make this like it's my home. I try to make a difference every day. Every day is a new day for me, and I come out here and try to do my best work. And I love it. I love it. I wouldn't change it for the world, and this is one of the best partners to have, Keegan here. He makes my job a lot easier. He helps catch bad guys a lot easier, makes my job a lot easier. So I thank the Saginaw Valley Police K-9 Association, the community for donating the money to get a police canine to help us out. And I thank my wife for always being there for me at those odd times of night that I get called out and away from home and have to respond to a bank robbery or whatever happens. So I appreciate the support. Thank you.
Our next item is a public hearing.
Oh, and we have a public hearing tonight. We have a request for Oprah, obsolete property rehabilitation district at 515 North Washington. Before we begin, and have Mr. Miller begin there, public hearing, the purpose of a public hearing is for the public to address council as a whole and for council to receive comments for consideration when action may be taken. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the hearing. Begin by stating your name. The main presenter or designated representative will be allowed 15 minutes. Other speakers will be limited to five. Speakers may ask general questions, but shall not ask questions of individual council members, city staff, or the audience. And a public hearing is not a question-and-answer session. With that, Mr. Miller.
Good evening, Mayor Browning, Mayor Pro Tem Clock, council members, and manager Morales. I'm Tom Miller with Saginaw Future. I'm here to speak tonight about the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act request before you. The Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act, or OPRA, provides for a tax incentive to encourage the redevelopment of obsolete buildings that are contaminated, blighted, or functionally obsolete. This requires a two-step process. The first is for council to create an OPRA district, and the second step is to consider the actual application for exemption at a future council meeting. If approved, the OPRA certificate would freeze the property tax for up to 12 years. The OPRA law was enacted to encourage individuals or businesses to rehabilitate, excuse me, buildings which, without new investment, might be destined for demolition. I kind of feel like a broken record. I think this is about our fifth OPRA in over the last couple of months, but I think that's a sign, a good sign, that folks are investing in our buildings. You know, that's a sign of economic activity. This one particularly, the city manager, you probably know, we meet once a month, every month, and talk about a number of these projects. This, this project has been on the agenda for, I think, probably three years. Saginaw Future's worked on this a lot over the years. It's a, it's a very exciting project, and Shaheen Development has worked tirelessly on this project. And luckily, you don't have to hear from me today about the project. We have Gary Glazza, who is the Chief Financial Officer for Shaheen Development, who can tell you a little bit about the project. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager.
I would say it's a very special project.
I believe some of the information that we've shared in our original application may have been in your packets, and you had a chance to review it. So I don't want to bore you with a lot of detail, but I will share with you that we're all quite familiar with the building known as 515 North Washington. It's been through a number of changes over its lifetime. I believe the Shaheen family picked up ownership sometime in the early 2000s, and since then has struggled to fill the building. And today, we have an opportunity to bring a Class A tenant into the structure that will fill it up for the very first time. In order to accommodate a Class A tenant, there are a number of things that need to be done. The building, because it's been empty so long, has had a certain amount of deterioration take place. Most importantly, we've had water damage that can be structurally repaired down in the basement area that's had an impact on the elevator system. But probably one of the more important elements of this building that needs to be dealt with is the fact that right now there are only two zones for heating and air conditioning. If any of you have ever had a chance to work in a building with only two zones and a building of seven floors, you can appreciate the difficulty there is in managing the heating and air conditioning system and the comfort of the occupants of the building. So we have the heating and air conditioning system that needs to be upgraded. The elevators are 1960's vintage. By itself, wouldn't be a real problem had it not been for some of the water damage that's occurred in a lower level. The basement in the fourth, in four floors of the building, the fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh floors are unoccupied. The basement can't be occupied under its present condition because of the water damage, but the top four floors surely can be once we make the changes as indicated. So we're going to put a new state-of-the-art heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system in the building. Each floor will have its own system, so it can regulate the comfort controls for the occupants of that, of those respective floors. The elevators won't be replaced, but they'll be substantially upgraded, again, to accommodate the demands of a Class A tenant and to satisfy the tenants that have been very loyal to the building over these past 12 to 15 years, including Mr. Miller's employer. The exterior of the building will benefit from additional insulation, plus we're going to re-glaze all of the windows and seal off all of the joints so that we can control incoming weather conditions, and of course, keep the conditions inside much more protective for the occupants. The exterior panels of the building will also have new gaskets placed on them and the joints sealed to eliminate any possible air and water infiltration to the building environment. And last but not least, we want to provide a good, high-quality parking lot for those tenants that are there, and of course, to accommodate the introduction of a new Class A tenant. So we'll be remilling the entire parking area and then resurfacing with new asphalt. So pretty much a complete redo of the building.
Is there anyone else to speak on the obsolete property rehabilitation at 515 North Washington? Second time, is anyone else to speak? Reference the obsolete property rehabilitation district at 515 North Washington? And third and final time, anyone else to speak? Reference the obsolete property rehabilitation district at 515 North Washington? Being none, I need a motion to close the hearing?
Moved.
Been moved and supported. Council, is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Our next item is personal appearances.
And for personal appearances, we begin tonight's business, we welcome your thoughts and input. If you come to the podium, please introduce yourself and state your home address. To be helpful, let us know if you will be speaking solely or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk. So be sure to cover your main points. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly, so we don't miss what you have to say. Finally, since you are speaking as a representative of all our citizens, we ask you to be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTV, and to this council, so that we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to our city staff. With that, Madam Clerk?
Our first speaker is John Acklin. Our next speaker is Passion Hall.
I'm here to, my name is Passion Hall. I am a property owner of 1607 Spruce here in the City of Saginaw. And I have an issue with trash collection. On this past Tuesday, my trash was taken to the curb, which my trash day is Wednesday. Trash was sent out on Tuesday because I had some carpeting pieces that was rolled up, taped, and placed on the curb. It did not get picked up, and I noticed it on Wednesday evening, so I called and left a message with Waste Management. And I followed through with a call that morning, as soon as they opened, about 8:30, I guess it was. And I spoke to one lady who informed me that the driver had called in, and it didn't dawn on me then when she said that. So I said, okay. So I called back because I wanted to know, why did the driver call in? So I got Marcy, who stated that she was the supervisor. And I asked her, why would the driver call in? The trash was not tagged or anything. She said that they call in every time they go to a house, and there's no trash there. That is their procedure, to call in. And I'm going, well, it was certainly there. I don't know if he, I don't know. I mean, it was there on the curb. I don't know how he could have missed it. There was vacant property next to my property, which there was no, no trash. But my issue is, she was very rude and condescending. And so I asked her if I could speak to a supervisor. She informed me that she was the supervisor. So I asked her if I could speak to her supervisor, and she said, I am the supervisor. So I guess she was telling me there was no one else that I could speak with. And then she placed me on hold. She told me she was going to put me on hold, and I said to her, I hope you come back, which she did not. I knew when she said she was going to put me on hold, I was just going to be on hold. So she never came back. And then I called the city, or City Hall, to file a complaint. And at one point, I was told that this was- And at one point, I was told that this was, I could only do that if it was a city issue. And the trash collection is a city issue. They said that it's subcontracted out. I said, okay. But still, there should be someone over them that can intervene, because I followed the procedures. I tried to follow the protocol.
Okay. So thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Julia Darten.
Good evening. I'm Julia Darten. I live at 1038 Passolt Street in Saginaw, 48602. And I'm here to speak about the farmer's market. And I want to start by saying, thank you so much to the city of Saginaw for all of the support that you have given the farmers, the downtown Saginaw farmer's market over the years. The farmer's market has been operating in Saginaw since 1910 continuously, and with different organizers. And we are very proud to continue the tradition. The downtown Saginaw farmer's market is a nonprofit board, and I am the chairperson of that board. And I want to invite you all to join us as we open this season, 2018, at our new location. And that is as a tenant of the SVRC Marketplace Project at 203 South Washington. Part of the reason why I started my remarks with such gratitude is that for the last many years, we have occupied property that's been, that is owned by the city and county land bank, and we have done so without charge, and we have done so in the hopes that we were bringing an asset to the community and showcasing not only the best produce in the community, but really a place where everyone is welcome to gather, where people can get fresh food, and sometimes there's entertainment. And we hope that by hosting the businesses at the farmer's market, the farms and other businesses that we host there, we are adding to the vitality and the positive things that are happening in the city. We are so proud to open in our 2018 season. Our hours are going to be Mondays from noon to six. I'm actually going to give you all a card, so don't feel like you have to write this down. Mondays from noon to six, Wednesdays and Fridays from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and Saturdays from nine to one. These hours will be also honored in, or mirrored in part by the SVRC Marketplace, which is going to be inside 203 South Washington and part of that project. We are, we are extremely proud to be their tenant and to be a partner with them in this project, rehabilitating a building that has been vacant, that is part of the heart of our community. I don't want to ask you for anything, except that if you, if you really love fresh produce, we would love to see you. I know that people are already picking asparagus. I know that plants and hanging baskets are being grown to be sold there, and we want to encourage you to spread the word that we accept, we accept the bridge card, we accept EBT benefits at the market. People can double their money, up to $20, every day that the market is open, and through a program called Double Up Food Box, which is privately funded, and, and supported by a federal incentive program. And we are just so excited about this coming season, and we know you are too. And I would like to leave these cards, so that anyone in the audience can take one as well. Yes, I will.
Our final speaker is Brandon Hosbeck.
Good evening, Mayor, council, city manager. My name is Brandon Hosbeck, vice president of the Saginaw Firefighters Union. I'm here tonight on behalf of my members, speaking for the membership. As you all know, we lost a fire station at the conclusion of the SAFER grant, which was unfortunate. But, you know, having said that, moving forward, you know, now that we're working through the budget process, that's the first budget since we lost the fire station. So obviously, myself, my membership, we're all, you know, concerned about, you know, what's the future going to look like for the fire department, and what direction are we headed in? So I sat, you know, tonight here at 5:00 at the committee of the whole meeting, and as a result, now granted, I haven't been able to see the whole budget document, you know, all I've seen is what was presented and what I was able to jot down. But three main questions came up. The first one being, it was easy to see that there was only one department that is seeing a reduction this year, and that was the fire department. There's a $2.5 million total increase, and I guess my first question is, why is the fire department the only department that is seeing a reduction? The second question would be, when you look at the budgets from 2015 to 2019, which is five budget years, the fire department has lost a total of $739,000 from the general fund. During that same period, the general fund has increased 2.8 million. So, you know, for my membership, it's concerning, you know, why is the fire department being treated differently from the majority? You know, maybe there's a simple answer, I'm just a fireman, I don't run numbers for a living, it's not what I do. But, you know, morale's not good right now at the fire department. Like I said, we lost a fire station. So, you know, I can only imagine, for those that, for my members that were home watching this presentation, I'm going to get questions. You know, why are we the only department that, that's losing, you know, funding? And maybe there's a simple answer, but, you know, it should be good to have it, because at face value, it doesn't look good. The last question is adding positions. I wasn't able to jot down all of the positions that are being added, but I did understand that there were some departments that were seeing positions added. And I just was wondering why, because at the conclusion of the SAFER grant, the fire department had some savings, we had some dollars that were available. And I know, I don't know the exact number that we asked for, but I know that some bodies were asked for, at least, you know, through the end of that budget year, and we were told no. So I guess the question is, is just why is the fire department told no, especially when we had money available? You know, and now, at the, at this new budget year, which I, I get that it's two separate budget years, and it's a different thing, but, you know, why are those positions being added? So I appreciate your time. Like I said, maybe there's an easy answer, but I would appreciate an answer. So, thank you.
We are now at remarks of council.
And council members, remind you that you have a five-minute time limit, and we begin with Brendan Moore.
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank all of our citizens who came and spoke, and I'm sure that the mayor, no, I'm sorry, that the city manager will get with you on some matters. It's always, it's always good to hear a pointed view from the citizens. This week, within the last two weeks, I've just been busy gearing up for campaign time. Campaign time is coming up for me. I did have the privilege on Saturday to go to the AKAs Hats Off to Mom Affair. Also went Saturday night to Saginaw Valley, to Women's of Color. Their group served, they celebrated 25 years of service. And so I went and represented the mayor there, or the city of Saginaw. On, last night, I went to Lorenzo Pearson's affair, and it was a, it was a send-off, because he is a young man who has did a lot in the community, but he was leaving on a new venture. And so, that's it for me. That's it, man.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I want to start by congratulating Officer Hope for, for the Office of the Year award. It's a tremendous thing, work that you do for the city, and I know, I appreciate it, I know everybody up here does. And it is important that the citizens know that your efforts are appreciated, and they tie in so well with the example you show for the entire police department. And everything Chief Ruth is doing and trying to do with regard to, with regard to converting the culture of the police department to one of extreme service to the public, recognizing the dangers that exist, but your, your particular efforts are greatly appreciated. So thank you for, for all you do, and congratulations. I do also want to, regarding Ms. Hall, as you, is she still here?
Yeah.
The, the issue really is one with waste management. I don't know if there's a lot we can do, but certainly the manager will make an effort and get back with you, I'm sure of that. Ms. Darten, thank you for your comments. It's, I'm looking forward to the opening of the farmer's market. The one thing you didn't do was say the date. I think it's later this month, there'll be an unofficial opening outdoors, is that correct? Okay, well, I believe it's later this month, but we will hopefully hear that soon, if we haven't got it. But thank you for everything that they're doing to bring the farmer's market to, back to. I had not realized that they'd been there since, or been operating since 1910. Brandon, your questions are of concern to all of us, I think. Again, we can't address those today. I'm sure the manager will attempt to get back with some answers for you as well. The, I do want to mention, I attended the, the Cinco de Mayo Festival on Saturday. The, I didn't make the parade, but it did make the festival, it was really amazing. There was thousands of people down at the Huntington Event Park. Estimates were as high as 3,000, and I wouldn't be at all surprised if that's what it was. Many people, many families, it was really wonderful to see. Next year, if everyone gets a chance, you should go. We have some great events in the city, and so this is one example of those events. Saturday, or Sunday, no, Saturday night, we went to Getting Greats at Court Street Theater, their second open event. If you haven't had a chance, go to the Court Street Theater, take advantage of it. It's an in-city venue. They had the, it was a movie by two Saginaw-area writer and a producer. The director is a well-known actor who also acted in it. It's a wonderful movie. Its last showing is on, is 7:00 on Thursday. The real interesting thing was, they had tried to get in, into the quad, the theater out on Tidewassee. They weren't able to, so they came here, and this was the first place the producer and the writer had ever been in a movie, or at a theater. That night is the night that, when they opened in the court, was when the, the big theaters were, had a blackout for power shortage. So they thought there was some justice in that. Yeah. Symphony is having its concert at, on this coming Saturday, 8:00. I'd invite everybody, council members and staff, anyone else to attend. And that's going to be a fabulous concert, so if you're thinking about it, consider it, please. There's a lot of things going on, they're entering that season of the summer, when there's hundreds of events in Saginaw. If anyone ever tells you there's nothing to do in this town, I hope you correct them, because there's too many things to do, to do all of them. I think everybody up here knows that and would tell you the same thing, so never let someone say, there's not enough to do in this town. With that, that's all of my comments. Thank you.
I don't want to rehash what's already been said. But Ms. Hall, thank you for bringing your concerns to the city council, is what we're here for. Hopefully, it's just a, just a blip. I think it's been several years now since the city has contracted with waste management to provide that service, but I can think of maybe three, maybe two complaints. So hopefully, it's just an aberration and not the general rule, but it appears that they are already working on it, so hopefully, you'll hear something here real soon. Ms. Darten, thank you for your contribution to the city. I remember not too long ago, where, amongst a few other sites, but you guys were there, you were thick and thin. Appreciate your commitment to the city. Can't wait for the new market to open, I'm sure it's going to be very exciting. Mr. Hosbeck, I want to thank you for your contribution to the, to the city. You've been very active and vocal and very supportive. You and your organization put your life on the line for our residents, and so thank you for that. I guess I wanted to thank Mr. Nina Meyer. I'm sorry if I say your name wrong, sir, but, you know, it's very positive that your organization is continuing to invest in our city. Awesome building, I'm sure it'll be even a better building. Thank you for your contribution. Officer Hope, I guess we've been working together for several years now, always a top-notch officer and professional and gentleman. Thank you for your contribution. And lastly, I just wanted to thank the staff for their budget. I guess fundamentally, it looks like it's heading in the right direction. We're maintaining a saver's account, which was suggested, and it seemed like it has been a goal for the city for so, for a few years now. And it appears that we're attempting to boost our credit, credit rating, so I think those are very positive signs for the city going forward, that can only make the city more attractive for outside investors. And that's all I had in there. Thank you.
I wanted to start with kind of a wrap-up on something that happened. We've had kind of a long break between meetings. We had the Saginaw Symphony Orchestra sponsors, the These Men Can Cook event, and we got an update recently. That event raised over $18,000 for the Saginaw Symphony. So that was a very popular event, and I look forward to attending that again next year. I wanted to thank a city staff member, the head of our tech services GIS, Jeff Klopsick. I had a recent visit with his department, and that was very informative about advancements in that department and infrastructure that serves that department. So I look forward to continuing to meet with our department heads and see what their operations work like. One here is, this is more of a open question, I doubt we're going to hear tonight, but to Mr. Glazza from SSP Associates, I look forward to when you can give us an announcement of who the Class A tenant is going to be for that building. I suspect it'll be a familiar name if I know what's up in the valley here. So look forward to that public announcement. And to Mr. Hosbeck from the Fire Department Union, I, I want to say your attendance here is, it's at the right time, because a budget is a policy document. So now is when to get your viewpoint known and the information on what we're going to do, because it will set what we're doing for the next year and future years. So thank you for addressing this. And that's really all I have tonight. Too much icing on a cake. I would simply acknowledge what has been said by so many of my fellow council members and echo their words. Other than that, I will pass.
I'd like to thank the citizens that came and spoke to the city council, meaning as eating. I hope that you're, we'll be getting some answers to your issues, especially my dear aunt that came to speak about her trash. I'm sure the city manager is going to get back with you and give you answers on why they didn't pick it up and make sure they do pick it up. So thank you for coming and bringing your concerns here. I'd like to speak about a, a couple of weeks ago, we had a young lady that came here that stayed near the Rifkin, not Rifkin, yeah, it is Rifkin, by Rifkin over there. She came complaining about all the trash in the neighborhood and stuff like that, and lo and behold, after she left here, her boyfriend took the run himself to pick up trash in that neighborhood. He's got to be, he's been out, at least every three days, he goes out and picks up trash in that neighborhood. He is a, went from Holland to Genesee Street, all the way back around the old transmission plant, he's been around the whole plant there. And now he's picking up some momentum with other people helping him pick up that trash. So it is, we have citizens that come here and complain and do something about it at the same time. And he's using his own, he's not getting paid for this, he just wants to make sure that our city looks good. And I'm going to help him do another neighborhood myself. And I think it's a beautiful thing, we have our citizens come here and try to get things done, you know, to make our city look better. Another thing I want to bring up, that, that puzzles, that bothers me so much is the, the problem that we have with, with young people running around here shooting each other. I know the prosecutor get tired of seeing it. I get tired of seeing it and hearing about it, because it hurts our city. And I would hope that all the citizens that can hear my voice would try their best to engage young people, to try to keep them out of trouble. I understand that if people go to work, they don't have time, they do crime. I understand that if people go to work, they don't have time to do crime. I doubt if they want to do it if they got a good job, you know, it would make no sense. I mean, if you gotta go to work, you ain't gonna be out here doing idiotic stuff. So that's one of the reasons why I've been involved in the Big Brothers and Sisters program, because I know that it works. After 30 years in the program, working through six young males, and none of them has gotten to the criminal justice system, proves to me that the program works. If anybody else is concerned, like I am, about the citizens in the city of Saginaw and the young youth, get in, engage these kids. They all, they wanted somebody to engage them. I know that association does bring about assimilation, if you've got a lot of young people running around doing things together more like they're going to do some knucklehead stuff. We all done it. And, so all these kids need is just a mentor, you know, somebody, a man or a man to tour them in their life. And I guarantee they'll get better, we bring down crime in the whole city of Saginaw, more businesses want to come here, it's a win-win for everybody. So if anybody knowing the employers, that's looking for some young men, please try to engage these young guys and try to get them involved in doing some positive stuff. Because it, it's really, just hard in knowing that young people are losing their lives at 21 and 22 years old, it, it's just devastating to the whole family. The mental health people that came here, I was really happy to see that the, we had mental health problems and drug addiction problems, and people come and get help, you know, we got someplace else to, so people can get some help. These young kids probably are suffering from substance abuse problems, and then we had a group here, you know, we can lead them there. So there's a lot of things we can do in this city to make it a lot better. Councilman Moore didn't mention, and I'm sure she thought about it afterward, that Mr. Pearson, he went off to Atlanta, Georgia to be a producer. He did plays here in the city of Saginaw, he rented our, our venues here, the Temple Theater and the City Center. And now he's going to Atlanta to be a producer of movies and TV shows. And I guarantee you, he's going to come back and get people from the city of Saginaw to do some acting, and he's going to produce some shows that's dealing with issues in Saginaw. So we can look forward probably one day to him bringing some of those dollars back here to the city of Saginaw and employing some of our youth, so I'm looking forward to that too. So, other than that, I don't have anything else to say. Thank you.
Well, just to wrap up here a little bit, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. Special thanks to our city clerk and our city clerk's office for all you do, and here it's, sometimes it's all those behind-the-scenes things that make things smooth, that the rest of us don't realize, that, what it takes. Thank you for going to the schools and trying to get our young people engaged in voting. Also, that there is a need for workers, those that may be interested in being a precinct worker, that is a paid position, and there's going to be training coming up soon on that. So, thank you very much. It was good to hear from the, our Department of Mental Health there, and the success that they are having is tremendous, but there's an awful lot of people out there who still needs our help with that. And Officer Hope, thank you very much for your service to our community. But I also want to say thank you to, to your wife and your family for supporting him. It's not easy, I know that. It's not easy when he's gone. It's not easy at all, and, and so a lot of credit for you, as strong as you are. Hang in there. You've got two beautiful boys there, and they are, I'm sorry, two handsome boys, and so it's a beautiful family, but please, we just accept our congratulations, and I know it's, it's very hard. So, thank you for that. We are in a, the city is in a mass cleanup from last Friday with the tremendous wind that we have. I know I returned to town on Friday afternoon. I got off on 75 on M46 and never had a traffic light that worked until I hit about halfway through the west side. And so there was a tremendous amount of, of power lines down, there's a tremendous amount of trees that are still down, and I know our crews were called out immediately. It seems like these storms just love weekends, because that's, that's when we had the least amount of people, and that's when we have to call them in. So that is a, a big process of cleaning all that up there. Last Thursday at 12 noon, this, this chamber was standing room only. It was part of the National Day of Prayer noon activities that went on here. I thank all those that came for that. And then later that night, we were out to Victorious Believers for the National Day of Prayer. And a lot of, a lot of thoughts and comments about the progress that the city has been making over the years, and we certainly want to thank them. Councilman Balls, we got a lot of jobs to fill. City of Saginaw has summer jobs that are available. We're looking for people to work. It's a, it's a good step in the right direction. If anyone is looking for some summer work, please contact our City of Saginaw. You can go on our website, and you can find it there, you can apply there, but we do need employees, additional employees, especially for this summer. With the park systems now, it looks like spring maybe here, I'm not sure if it's staying, but it looks like it's here right now, the grass is growing, and that means we got a lot of work that has to be done in there. And the lastly, May 25th, it says on my little card here, for the farmer's market, May 25th. And so we're, we're all excited about that and looking forward to that new addition downtown. I know that the residents, that the Bancroft and the Eddie Building are just ecstatic about that, because being a year-round farmer's market, that allows these young professionals within walking distance of that facility to get the needed fresh produce and some of the other stuff that's going to be sold there at the year-round facility, so we're really excited about that. So with that, Madam Clerk?
Our next item is reports from the manager.
And, can you hear it? Let me hear the board.
I do. First, I'm going to congratulate Officer Hope and remind everyone, the annual police award ceremony is this Thursday, May 10th at 10:00, Temple Theater, and you'll get to hear more about Officer Hope and a lot of the other officers who will be receiving awards, and also the memorial ceremony. And I'm just going to give the officer and his family a moment so they can go home now. So hopefully you'll get a chance to go to the ceremony this Thursday. Also, we, City of Saginaw has received the Government Finance Officers Association's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for its comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2017, otherwise known as the audit. Their certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment. Reports must demonstrate the spirit of full disclosure to communicate their financial story in order to achieve the, the award. This is the ninth consecutive year that the City of Saginaw has received the award, so I would like to congratulate Finance Director Lori Brown and the Fiscal Services staff. So the committee of the whole meeting, reminder is next Monday, as the clerk said, will continue with the budget presentations, 5:00 PM in council chambers, and that meeting will have no action, but we'll just go until we're completed and then adjourn the meeting. And then the next week, our regular council meeting will be at the regular time at 6:30. I guess I didn't read all the notes that Yolanda sent carefully enough, but she did mention something. So you did receive a lot of information, and there was a lot there, and I have to commend them for fitting that all in that one hour. Normally we don't do that, but you might have missed some of the things. Yolanda did mention something, I didn't, I didn't notice it in the notes, but I would, I would announce it now, since it, it was presented, but Dennis Jordan, I'm recommending that he be appointed as the Assistant City Manager in the budget. Yolanda mentioned that. We have a lot of department heads that do things outside of their departments. A few in particular work on a lot of special projects with me or for me. Dennis Jordan has been doing that for a few years, things outside of human resources. Jeff Klopsick does that as well. I don't, you don't see many places where the Technical Services Director is in charge of building one of our parks, so we've had to make changes like that. But Dennis has been working on the management review team for quite some time, and I think this helps give, give council another person as well as for incidents that could happen, you know, something could happen where I may not be able to attend a meeting, so this gives you that official backup without, without having to have me intervene at any time if, if I'm incapable of doing that. So I wanted to mention that, since, since you probably heard that announced by Yolanda. I do think that Brandon Hausback has been coming to meetings for a long time, so appreciate him attending the meeting tonight. I do think Yolanda did cover, as well as Brian Weiss, another individual in her department, cover a number of these items that were, that Brandon brought up questions for about the fire department. But I also think there, there is a danger in, in these kind of direct comparisons when you're looking at the budget. Things don't happen at the same time, all the time. Departments across the city have been cut at various times, varying times, so you wouldn't see that drastic decline in, in spending or staffing in, in a four- or five-year period. It's probably been some time, I think the, I was talking to Phil Carwatt recently, I think the Cemeteries Department probably, even when Kim worked in public services at one time, had somewhere in the neighborhood of about 18 employees, and they have about four now. Which does have a significant impact on the, the service that, that we can provide in that area. The Police Department went from, I believe, 105 to 95 to 55 in a three-year period. I believe that's a pretty, pretty drastic cost decrease during that time, that happened to be, I think the final cut was four years ago, Chief, so. And anytime we have those type of cuts, you have to adapt to the way that you provide service, and it's difficult, and there are a lot of, of pains there. I was, the biggest decrease since I've been with the city had been in the Police Department, I believe, and I, it's taken a long time to make a lot of changes. Chief Ruth has, has made a lot of changes there, and initially, you pull back a lot. I mean, we pulled back officers that were in auto theft prevention authority grant, we pulled back from Bayonet, we had pulled back from Safe Streets Task Force, FBI Task Force, we pulled back from community policing. So there are a number of areas, and now I think we see, we're, we're moving back into some of those areas because we see the importance. I think we do have a detective in Safe Streets again, or that we will be, we have someone back in Bayonet. Just because the initial thought was to put everything we have on the streets, but it's always changing, you know, we, we don't know what, what will happen with the state police in the city under a new governor, so we have to look at these things as we go. I think one of the biggest changes for the questions that, that Mr. Hausback raised, I heard Yolanda state and Brian both state that the biggest decrease in the fire was related to pension, which happened in the Police Department last year, about $800,000 decrease in the pension for the Police Department last year. That cost is recognized again this year with about an equal increase, if not a little bit more, and I think Brian mentioned that they expect that increase in fire next year, because we've seen that pattern where they trail. So I think, I think we can get responses to those. But I think we also have been somewhat proactive. If you recall, I mentioned it before when we talked about the safer grant, we had added two firefighters. When the Police Department and the Fire Department were both on the block to be reduced, four years ago it was 15 firefighters in that reduction. We reduced 13 because we added two general fund positions to help with that staffing. This year, the additions in any staffing in the budget are covered by either revenue increases or grants. So, since the cut in the Police Department, we have not added any police officers from the general fund funding source. I believe this year, the two officers are in the general fund. The funding source, however, is Covenant Hospital, so it's not actually a general fund tax-funded, revenue-sharing funded position. They might be listed in that complement, but they're not increases. We do have an inspector on inspection services that is being funded by the revenue that Councilman Balls asked Ms. Jones about. It's related to increased revenue from inspections. So that, that's kind of where those things fall in. I think we can go back and look at the notes to get some additional, if there's additional items from those questions, we'll get that to council, but I think they did a good job with covering that, maybe it was a little quick for everybody to catch, but we'll get that to you. So with that, that concludes the management update.
Any questions for the manager, references update? Any questions? Being none? I'm quick.
Our next item is the consent agenda.
And I'm supposed to announce that that has been available at City Hall and on the city's website and on SGTV Channel 191. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions. It's been moved and supported. Is there any exceptions? Any exceptions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
We are now at reports from boards, commissions, and committees.
And I need a motion to approve the appointments, items one through five, leaving room for exceptions. Has there any exceptions? Any exceptions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Our next item is consideration and passing of ordinances. We have an ordinance to amend Section 32.10, street names, vacations of streets and alleys of Chapter 32, jurisdiction, streets, Title III administration.
Need a motion to adopt?
Moved.
Been moved and supported. Council, is there any further discussion? Councilman?
I would just like to mention that this amendment to this ordinance has a very important section, K, where when people have petitioned to have a vacation, it now gives us an opportunity, if they have abandoned that action they promised in their petition, we have an actionable way to take care of that problem with this ordinance, and I think that's very important for us.
Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
We are now at resolutions. Our first on the agenda is authorizing an obsolete, obsolete property rehabilitation certificate at 515 North Washington Avenue.
Motion to approve, been moved and supported. Is there any?
And just because there's both in the upper process, I wanted to make that clear for the record.
One more time, we can. District at 515 North Washington Avenue.
It's been, it's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Our second is authorizing an obsolete property rehabilitation certificate at 409 Adams Street.
Been moved and supported for the authorization of an obsolete property rehabilitation certificate at 409 Adams. Any further discussion, council members? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Our third and final is authorizing a pilot drinking water community supply grant agreement with the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality.
Do I need a motion?
I would move, I want to add the word water supply.
Authorizing a pilot drinking water community supply grant?
Community water supply grant. Well, it's in, the authorization talks about drinking water, community water supply. I'm assuming that's.
Clarification from our attorney?
The government's intent to do the water price for the resolution title.
Has it been noted?
The resolution language also continues in that matter in the same way as the title.
The one is referencing the community, the second is with the water supply grant program. So I think it does need to be in there twice. So my motion is to approve it.
As it's written.
As it's written in the authorization, or in the resolution. No, I think that's.
We're approving it as it's printed in the resolution.
Do we have a second for that? Is that correct? A second. Any other further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Now we're on finished business. Any new business coming before the council?
New for adjourned.
I have a motion. I have a motion support. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, we're adjourned.